It's time to call the Planning and Zoning Board, October the 10th meeting to order, to begin the meeting. We'll ask Ms. Reiner to lead us in a word of prayer and then lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good Lord.
Dear Lord, thank you for this day, this beautiful weather. And Lord, we just ask you to be with all that have been affected by the hurricanes and tornadoes, Lord. Just please be with them. We pray that everyone can get the help they need. Lord, just be with us today in this meeting. Help us to hear all sides. And Lord, help us to make decisions that we can feel that is right and according to your will. Lord, just please go with us, guide us and direct us in all we do, in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To give you a little guidance of how we conduct this meeting tonight, the case will be presented, the applicant will have a time to present, and then if we have people signed up for or against it, will be given time. We have two clocks on the wall to your right. One will be for the opposition, one will be for the presenter. If you did not sign up, you will not be allowed to comment or ask questions. We need to definitely show respect for one another, and we've got a big agenda tonight. We've got 17 items, so we need you to be patient. And we're leaving the doors open because there's more than our seating capacity. So if you're in the hall, we ask you to not be talking so that we can hear and everybody in the room can hear. With that said, I'll call for an approval for the minutes from the September the 10th meeting. Have a motion from Ms. Yolanda and a second by Mr. Lane, all in favor. That's unanimous. I'll call for approval of the minutes from the September the 12th meeting. Have a motion by Ms. Yolanda, second by Ms. Reiner, all in favor. Okay, we'll go to item number one. L S Acquisitions LLC variance request. L N S Acquisitions LLC has submitted an application requesting a variance of 250 gallons per minute from the 500 gallons per minute as required by Appendix B subdivision regulation 7.7.10. The property is located on Harville Road. Joey Maxwell will be acting as agent. The Board of Commissioners will hear this case 5:30 on November the 7th, 2024, in this room. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This case originally, I think, was scheduled for August, and then it, due to the advertising requirements for the zoning procedure law, it, I guess this is the first time y'all are hearing it. This location, or this development, is one that I believe you all approved for a sketch plan a few months ago, so they're working through the design process. And the approximate location is in south of Statesboro along Harville Road. This was originally planned to be a second portion of Planters Row, but ownership changed hands, and so this is essentially a standalone subdivision. And the request would be, I believe, for the existing water system from across the street and next door to be able to serve this new subdivision. But there's some, I guess, capacity concerns from the applicant, so with that, I'll let the applicant discuss the details. But this is the multifamily subdivision that's, you know, as approved. But with that, and what our staff report reflects, is that staff recommends a denial of the request. And this is picture from the property. Again, this hasn't really progressed into, you know, they haven't started building houses yet. It's just barely at the land disturbance phase. And so with that, I'll leave the sketch plan up, and I believe Mr. John Dotson is going to speak on behalf of Maxwell Reddick and Associates.
Thank you, Mr. Pope, Mr. Chandler. Good evening. My name is John Dotson with the firm Maxwell Reddick. I'd like to read a brief letter of intent that I was presenting. Mr. Maxwell couldn't be here this evening, so I asked good old John to stand in for him. So anyway, bear with me. Regarding L N S Acquisitions, application for variance to reduce the required fire flow from 250 gallons to 250 gallons per minute from the required 500 gallons per minute. Lisa Hodges and Stephen Sawyers, L N S Acquisitions, are the current owners of this tract of land. The parcel was rezoned by Mr. Henley of Henley Properties in the distant past. In addition, Mr. Henley commissioned the preparation and permitting of the proposed developments under those regulations in place at that time. L N S acquired the property with the intent to develop the property as previously permitted by Mr. Henley. However, the ordinances of Bullock County were revised, which require a higher fire flow than the previous ordinance, which will significantly increase the cost of the water system and may create a maintenance or water quality issue due to the size of the development, not providing enough to turn over the volume of water in the mains daily, which may lead to stagnant water in the mains, which will create odors and a reduction or degradation of the chlorine in the water, which could potentially create an environment for bacteria to grow. You know, and if that happens, you all know and have heard boil your water. So that could be a result of that. So based on that, we would ask for a consideration to reduce the fire flow from the current requirement of 500 gallons per minute down to 250, which it was previously. Thank you, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
So do I understand they're wanting to use the existing water system? Is that what you said, James?
There has been some conversation about being able to tie in a second well or use the neighboring property and then for the water and then have another well on site. That was the last of my conversation with the applicant.
It would still require the 500 gallons per minute as our current ordinance?
Right. I think to meet the 500 gallon per minute requirement, they wouldn't, I don't think they would be able to use what's on the neighboring property.
Not at all.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Good evening, Mr. Dotson. Is there any data-driven evidence about the water quality issue? Because I would think the turnover of the water really depends on a lot of factors, including the water's temperature, disinfectant residuals, things like that, and probably the size of the tank as well. And how many units were proposed for this development?
Hang on just a second, Mr. Couch. I want to say somewhere in the neighborhood of 70 units.
Okay. Well, would there be any simulation or modeling to support the assertions about water quality?
I'm sure the engineers have, yes, sir. I do not have that information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Couch. Any other questions from this board? Mr. Lane?
I find it hard to believe that we don't think that 70 units is going to turn over those pipes every day. I mean, that's a lot of people and a lot of water. So I feel like this bacteria thing is a little fishy.
The way it was explained to me this afternoon was to increase the pumps, you are increasing the size of the pipes, which has more water stored in it. Now, I'm not an engineer, I'm just a dumbo surveyor, so doing the best I can.
You said the extra well you have, that when they bring it up to 500 instead of 250?
That is the requirement, yes, sir.
The current well is on another property, so they would not be able to tie into that. They would have to put in their own water system to meet the 500 gallons per minute. Correct? Okay. Any other questions from this board? Entertain a motion?
Motion to deny.
Have a motion to deny by Mr. Lane, a second by Ms. Baath. All those in favor of denial, that is unanimous. Thank you. Item number two. 5B Holdings LLC has submitted an application to rezone approximately four acres from R-25 residential, 2,500 square feet, to R-2, two-family residence, 15,000 square feet. For the purpose of building seven two-family dwellings, the property is located at 701 Pat's Lane. Chris Gohegan will be the acting agent. The Board of Commissioners will hear this case at 5:30 November the 7th, 2024, in this room, and the staff recommends approve. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This case was one previously heard by this board. It was deferred to tonight's meeting for some additional input from the applicant, I think, regarding the water system and the service capability for that, if I recall. Just briefly, the general location is off of Georgia 24, just on the east side of Statesboro. You'll see Pat's Lane currently is on R-25. And again, this request would be for essentially 14 dwelling units, being seven two-family dwellings. And this is the site plan. So with that, I don't know how much more detail you all need, but again, we recommend approval. But I'll turn it over to the agent to, I guess, answer some of the questions that y'all had in the last time.
Thank you, Mr. Pope, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Chris Gohegan. I'm a lawyer with Talby Rushing here in Statesboro. Pleased to be with you tonight to have an opportunity to speak with you again about the project you see on your monitor, which is a project owned by 5B Holdings LLC. 5B Holdings LLC is an entity owned by Mr. Rob Bowen. He's a local businessperson, and he acquired these lots in May of this year. Gave a presentation on this in the September meeting. A couple of you weren't here, so just by way of quick reintroduction, we do have a four-acre parcel that we are seeking to rezone from R-25 to R-2 in order to develop seven duplex units containing two or three bedrooms. The plat that you see on your monitor reflects a design for Pat's Lane that has been in place since 1990. These lots have been plotted for duplex construction for over 30 years. The water lines to serve these units are in place and have been in place for that long. The tap fees have been paid. The only thing that hadn't been done on these lots is to actually go and build the duplexes, and we're seeking a rezone in order to accomplish that tonight. Just across the way, across Sweetheart Lane, is a community of roughly 40 existing duplexes, which are also zoned R-2. And then there are the three existing units already on Pat's Lane, which are duplexes themselves. So we're just seeking to complete the design that's been in place for around 30 years. At the September meeting, there were a number of members from the community who spoke, and we heard their comments. They expressed three primary concerns. One related to the condition of Sweetheart Lane, another related to the capacity of the water system, and a third related to litter in the community and just general appearance and quality of the community, and concerns from those neighbors about how these additional units might impact what they already have with concerns about their neighborhood. We did hear those concerns, and I appreciate the committee giving us an opportunity to go and do some digging and try and find information to address some of those concerns. At the outset, I have to note that neither the condition of the road, the condition of the water system, or existing litter in the community can in any way be connected to 5B Holdings LLC or what we're trying to do here tonight. 5B Holdings doesn't have any jurisdiction or ability to maintain the roads. It does not have any control of or ability to maintain or improve the water system, and these units have not been developed. So there's no way living in those units to have contributed to the existing litter situation. But we want to be a quality neighbor and contribute to this community, not take away from it, so we're happy to have an opportunity to look into some of these issues. I did speak with Mr. Deal specifically regarding the condition of Sweetheart Lane. He confirmed for me that there is an active contract to have that lane resurfaced. I think it probably already would have been done if not for our enrollment in the Hurricane of the Month Club. And then in the next 60 days or so, we expect that that project will be complete. So I hope that the community will be happy to hear that, and I know in terms of the owners and future residents of these lots, that's a good thing as well. Specifically as to the water system, this water system is owned by Tucker Utilities and is managed by MSO. I spoke to a representative of MSO since our last meeting who confirmed for me there are two tanks serviced in this community. There's one 5,000-gallon tank and a second 1,000-gallon tank. Those tanks are fully permitted, and there's no problems, according to MSO, with the system. The system is fully adequate to serve these additional units without any problems. A specific question, I think, was asked by Mr. Baath. Is there a backup generator on this system? There is not a backup generator on this system. The reason I was given for that is that Georgia state law does not require a backup generator for a water system that services less than 1,000 homes, and this system serves less than 1,000 homes. It does not have a backup generator. However, in the interest of being a good neighbor, 5B Holdings would commit to purchase a backup generator to provide to MSO to service that pump in the event of an electrical interruption. We don't want our tenants to be on outwater. We don't want the community without water. That's something we can offer. That is within our control. As to the litter, I'm afraid I don't have a good answer for that. You know, it's just unfortunate that people don't treat maybe their community in the way it should be. I'd like to believe these probably aren't people who live in the community who are contributing to this issue, and certainly we hope that the tenants of these properties won't be a problem there either. That's what I have to add since our last meeting. I'll remain available to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We have some people signed up that oppose it. Dion Hendricks, would you come up?
Hello, how y'all doing? My name is Dion Hendricks. I live at 611 Sweetheart Lane. We've been here before. It was wonderful what he said about wanting to do all of these wonderful things, but you heard exactly what I heard. He's not responsible for the road, and I don't understand that. The last time we came here, it was the road, to get the road fixed was going to be about a year or so. And now it would have been done if it wasn't for the hurricane. I mean, we just skipped, I mean, we just had a hurricane, and we just had all this stuff come through and just destroy Bullock County. I heard on the news that 70% of the roads in the county, on the dirt roads, were just destroyed. You know, I drive around, I see trees everywhere. Still everywhere, but we're going to move all this stuff, and we're going to push Sweetheart Lane to the top of the list so we can get a road paved, which probably won't even be a decent pave, so that they can build something down there. I just don't think it's right. Yeah, I walk that road every day. When we moved out there, we knew what we was getting into. I saw the apartments down there, and I looked around, and we met with the county, and the county told us that if you give up your property, we will pave the road. It won't be a nice road, but you'll have a road instead of a dirt road. The county told us that it would not be a whole lot of traffic going up and down this road, so we'll be okay 30 years ago. And guess what? I gave up my property. George, you gave up property?
Yeah.
Yeah, we gave up property because it was an agreement, and I'm a man of my word. If you say you're going to do something, let's do it. Now, I understand, they may have had this 30 years ago, but they didn't do it. Things change. If you want to do that, what about, we walk every day, so increased traffic mean that now there is no sidewalk, there is no street lights, there is nothing. The road is completely dark, mean more traffic. Kids running up and down the road, a potential for an accident. I'm just saying, I don't want it there. Definitely going to be a problem in my eyesight. Dennis Nelson is not here today because of the hurricane. This is so important to Dennis. He's an engineer. This is what Dennis do. Dennis came and wrote a five-page letter explaining how many trucks it's going to take with concrete to come down this road to do all this work. Dennis broke everything down. But guess what? Hurricane come, and Dennis had to stop and go and repair some people's houses to help them get back on track. And so I'm just disappointed that I feel like even if you paved the road, why would we be moved to the top of the list just so that somebody could build something down there? And the thing about it is, they were already doing work down there before it was decided. We walked down there, we saw them cutting the trees and moving the stuff already, like it's already a done deal. I'm just disappointed, you know? That's all I got to say. I expect better. But you know, I understand that, you know, everybody want to grow, and Bullock County definitely want to grow. And I understand that, but do it the right way. Just don't take. I mean, this is what, this is our life. And so if you're just willing to just throw some gravel on the road just so they can build what they want to build, then hey, you know, there's really nothing that I can do, but I just want to let you know that I'm personally disappointed. It's just not right. And I think there's so many people out here that still don't even have a road that they can get without going around trees. You got citizens stopping in the middle of the road with chainsaws, cutting and dragging stuff out the way. But yet, the county going to stop and say, we're going to bypass that, and we're just going to build a road so that they can build a complex.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right.
George Jenkins?
My name is George Jenkins, and I live at 608 Sweetheart Lane, and I've been living there for 30 some odd years. And just like the man said here, when we had a dirt road, and it was practically impassable anytime it rained, and they came to us and said, if we had this much right of way, we would pave it. We need you guys to give up property so we can pave it. And there's, we got enough people along the line to do that. That's happened, and the road would be maintained. Well, the road was built, and very little maintenance has been done on it. The road paving is an issue for us because we drive on it. They went, when they built the road, they put speed gaps in to keep people from running up and down the road. Right now, you'll see people running up and down that road 60 mile an hour. And many of these people are from the, this property is as far back on this whole area as you can get, so they have to use that entire road. And the people that are renting don't have any ownership of that place. The people that are coming and talking own the houses that they live in. These people do not own it. They're renting. And you wonder where the trash comes from? Well, it doesn't come from the people that own the houses and live there. They don't go out and dump their trash. But the people that rent are coming up and down the road, and they'll throw out any kind of bags and whatever as they go. That's been an issue. But when the road was built, it had speed brakes along it, and they had speed limits on it. The speed limit signs were replaced. The speed brakes have not been, a lot of maintenance has not been done, and that's basically the reason I'm so opposed. I know that there are kids that walk up and down that road, and these cars come by at 60 mile an hour, and the road's not very wide at all, and there's not room to get off on the side because there's so much litter on the sides. The ditches are not maintained. And I can't speak for the water because I have my own water, but most of those houses are on a water system, and they complained that the water goes out. They were down longer for the water, lack of water than they were for the lack of power. Most of them are on Georgia Power, but that water system is on a different system, and it didn't have, it did not have power to the water. So they were stuck there with no water for almost a week. But that's an exception. We can't work with exceptions. I understand that. I understand that we have to be very reasonable about what we ask for, but we ask for this not to be approved to prevent more families that are moving in there for rental, and they're not going to be there long. And whenever they get up and they have trash, they don't go to the dump like most people do. They throw it out on the side of the road, most of the time between their house and the main road, which is Highway 24. That's where we live. And I appreciate your time. And is there any questions?
Okay, thank you, Mr. D.
Okay, thank you.
Rob, do you want to speak?
He's going to sit this time.
Okay. All right, that concludes those for and against it. Questions from this board?
Can I say something?
No, sir.
I got a call from Travis. I couldn't sign on.
I'm sorry. Any questions from the board? Entertain a motion?
I make a motion to deny.
A motion to deny has been made from Ms. Trimble, second by Mr. Baath. All those in favor of denial, that's unanimous. And this case will be heard November the 7th, here before the commissioners. All right, agenda item number three. Jason Williams has submitted an application to rezone approximately 20.83 acres from R-40 residential, 40,000 square feet, to R-3 residential, 15,000 square feet, for the purpose of creating a multifamily housing development. The property is located at or near 16287 Georgia Highway 67. Steve Rushing will be acting as the agent. The Board of Commissioners will hear this case 5:30 November the 7th, 2024, in this room. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This case and the following case is obviously very similar, but this board heard this last month as well. This location is just south of Statesboro along Highway 67. You'll see the current zoning map. This parcel is shown, highlighted in blue. The portion The portion that's seeking for rezone is to the uh, I guess the southwest portion of Highway sixty-seven, so it's not the entirety of that, that parcel. But as you can see, the, the area zoning, you know, it's kinda where different zoning meets, uh Ag five, um R forty, R twenty-five. There are, there is a planned unit development just north, uh going towards Statesboro on sixty-seven that has around four hundred townhomes that, you know, uh approve within the last two years. Currently, the property is used just, you know, uh as agriculture field. This was the original sketch plan that this board was presented by the applicant in our last meeting. Uh which shows two access points on Carrington South Drive and then on Elmer Phillips Road. Uh the applicant has since come back with a, a second design, a redesign. And it was uh a later submittal, so it was not included in the, um, in the staff report, but essentially the same proposed dwelling units per acre. But it does show access on to Highway sixty-seven. In the uh, in the midterm from last meeting to this meeting, staff reviewed some of the provisions in our zoning ordinance in which uh I, I do think it would be necessary to say that our supplemental standards for multifamily units uh require access on a collector or arterial street, which Georgia Highway sixty-seven is an arterial street by classification. Carrington South Drive is not. So uh either the access would have to go on to Highway sixty-seven or a variance would have to be filed uh and approved by this body uh at a later date. But the, the rezoning could go forward, but um I just wanna bring that to your attention as well that the access point would, you know, have to change or a variance would have to be approved. Alright, this is on Carrington Drive or Carrington South Drive. And then the again, the use being um, current use as agriculture. So where am I at here? Sorry, I went too far. Um so I'll leave it at, at the site plan and turn it over to the um to the agent, Mr. Steve Russian. And I'll add that, you know, we do have some conditions in the staff report that are reflected in, in the staff report. We just recommend that if approved, those conditions will be adopted. So.
Mr. Rush.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I am Steve Rushing. I'm attorney here in Statesboro. And I'm representing the applicant tonight, uh who is Jason Williams. Uh he's here with me tonight. Um he's missing his daughter's soccer game. That's how important this is to him and so he'll probably have to pay for that when he gets home tonight. But um, thank you, Mr. Pope. That was a good summary uh of kinda how we, we got back here from uh last month. Since we filed the initial application back in June, uh when the Cone family on this property, Mr. Williams has closed on the contract and he is now the owner. Uh it is his intent to uh conduct this townhome project. He wants to own it and maintain it himself. That's not to say that maybe someday in the future he could sell off units, but that is his, kind of his retirement plan to kinda operate uh this project. Uh yes, uh again, that was one of the reasons that we got deferred. I think uh we learned something when we got here to the uh meeting before. And in fairness to the, the staff, uh we had uh an Elmer Phillips access on our original plan, as you saw. And then when we received the uh staff report, it included a, a paved area on Elmer Phillips Road that we felt we couldn't do, so we uh deleted that, but we didn't have time to submit a new plan like this. And in fact, now we just got it submitted uh this week and so that's in fairness to the staff, they didn't have it uh when they, I guess, submitted your package to you, but in, in fairness to us, uh there was a hurricane that hit and we, the, the officers were closed last week. So uh we got it to them this week. But that is the plan that takes into account both our deletion of the access to Elmer Phillips Road and the new information that was provided to us that, that we didn't know at pre-application meeting. That there would be an arterial road access requirement, which would just be Highway sixty-seven. So thus, uh we're back with this uh, this, the units are pretty much the same, same number of units. We just moved the two access to the Carrington Drive now to Highway sixty-seven in our site plan. Now that will require uh G dot to approve all that and uh we'll be making that application. So uh that's why Mr. Pope said if that didn't go through G dot, then we have to come back to seek variance to perhaps access Carrington Drive or, or some other method. So uh that's why we're, we're back here today with the uh, the new plan. Uh the other thing mentioned, there are, the uh Carrington South subdivision that you see uh at the top of the picture there. Uh they were here last um month also and it had some opposition and and uh we did seek to try to hook up with them since then. Had one meeting with the uh, Mr. Williams did with the chairman of their board. Uh we tried to schedule another one, but Mr. Williams was out of town. Then we got back and we had this, it just didn't materialize. So uh we did reach out a couple of times and had some conversation, but we didn't um ever come up with a, a, a mutual plan, so to speak. So we're back here, however, with this plan, which they have not seen either. They had not seen the, the accesses to uh sixty-seven. One other thing, though, w- we still are mindful of their concerns. And um obviously, um a, a buffering system is gonna be important. Uh they've already got a very nice buffer system in front of their property. Uh we're gonna be required to have uh, uh an equivalent or better buffer system because there have been a new buffer ordinance passed uh that requires a landscape engineer to actually produce that. That will include trees. And so um we trust that, that the ordinances that are in place that provide for these kind of buffers will give some additional uh, uh site protection uh to those residents uh of Carrington South. On the road, uh they also express some concerns about sharing uh Carrington Drive with, you know, this number of units. Again, if G dot allows us that, we shouldn't have that kind of problem either. If we're now accessing uh Georgia Highway uh sixty-seven, uh they would require these turn lanes that you see there. Now, we, we did already go through all those standards back at uh our last meeting. Those are the standards that this uh body is required to consider in making their decisions. I think the staff did a really good job at addressing each of those uh standards, which the majority of which do support this application. And I think that led to um the, the staff determining that the subject property does appear to be suitable for our um desired use. So again, uh this property was already designated uh as a suburban neighborhood character area in the future land use plan. R three falls right within the suburban uh character area. Also, there is the R three zone across sixty-seven that is already in existence. That's a R three zone. Also, the, the property that you heard is item number one. That's now got to have five hundred gallons. That's an R three also that backs up to the back of um Carrington South. It actually fronts on Harville Road, but comes uh all the way back to the Carrington South property. So there are R three uh areas already uh, uh in this area. What we're trying to do is to efficiently balance the high cost of land and the efficient use of that land. Along with the infrastructure, this would be city and uh sewer and water that would come to this property. Use the engineered buffers that's required by the ordinance and other measures that would protect the residents. So we would request that you recommend approval uh of our request to an R three zone. Uh the conditions kinda speak for themselves. I don't think we need number six now since we no longer uh address Elmer Phillips Road. The other ones on, on the um sidewalks, we're really not opposed to those in, along sixty-seven, but we we see that there's gonna be issues actually connecting that to town because of some structures that are between here and there. So if, if you think that could happen, but as far as making any condition of the project, we'd ask that you not, but we certainly uh, you know, will follow your direction on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rush. We do have someone signed up to speak against it. Henry uh Grady Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm uh, if you would, I'm, I'm a, I'm a little behind. I downloaded uh what was available publicly on the internet, prepared, prepared my presentation based upon that. And uh my information is a little bit out of date. But I'm gonna go through it best I can. I think the items, I think, it's my opinion, items three and four should be considered together. The same developer, they're adjacent each other. They're adjacent Carrington South, they're adjacent sixty-seven. So this is what they look like together. Based upon the information uh I had available. As Mr. Rushing related, um we're surrounded by R three. We have the hammocks across the street, that's at the bottom. And going around clockwise, we have Soho Villas under construction, right behind us. We're enjoying that, that noise. Planters Row, hundred twenty-eight units. And JCT Investments was approved for ninety-one units. They're not under construction yet. So right now, either existing under construction or three hundred and nine units of R three all around us. If this, if, when, when, when JCT starts construction, that'll bring it to four hundred. And this development will bring it to six hundred and forty-four because I think the new plan is two more units on item three. It's our feeling that the seventy acres remaining across the street from the proposed item three is probably gonna be developed. It's probably gonna be asked for as R three. So we, we're gonna be uh, an R twenty-five island and amongst, amongst R three. And all that comes with it. We're, we're entertaining noise, gunshots, parties now from Planters Row. I'm sure Soho Village is gonna be the same. I'm, I'm expecting that to be students. Just not, just not gonna improve our quality of life. This, this development exceeds that's not working. There we go. According to my research, uh the smart bullet plan for a suburban neighborhood density, recommended density, design density is two to four units per acre. Well, it just so happens that Soho, Planters Row and the Hammocks all fall in that, all in that envelope. We at Carrington, of course, we're R twenty-five, we're a little over one, one per acre. But item three and item four, you can see far exceed the design uh guidelines. Um that's one point eight times and almost two and a half times. It's, it's outside of, outside of design guidelines. And for that reason alone, I would recommend, or ask you for denial. Traffic evidently has been addressed. I can't, I can't speak to that right now. The Josh Dill paving evidently has been addressed. Can't speak to that. Can't speak to Elmer Phillips Dirt Road being used during fair week, which we don't have to go through this year because construction of the circle's been delayed two weeks. So we're, we're just gonna suffer along with everybody else on the uh, getting up and down sixty-seven. I uh, I do want to address the ownership. The letter of intent publicly available, and this is probably early on, but it was, it, it's, it, the parcels were, were described in the letter of intent as, as, as um being owned by two different estates. But my, it's my understanding that the land was closed on in early August and early September. Maybe that should be updated. And one major sticking factor for me is there's about one acre at the end of this parcel, and I apologize for the change in orientation. It's owned by Quarterback Farms. However, the sketch plan shows it included in the development. I don't know how you do that. I'm not sure how that, how that can happen. And in reviewing, in reviewing your evaluation, it looks like it's gonna cost the taxpayers over seven years about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for this development to go forward. Both, both of them have a negative economic impact on taxpayers of Bullock County. Your, your evaluation says the fiscal economic impact's negative, schools are negative, law enforcement's negative, EMS fire's negative, recreation's negative, traffic in roads you said were uh neutral. I was gonna disagree with that, but I was surprised tonight. It was not publicly available. The only positive that the staff came up with is Statesboro Sewer and Water. And I agree with that. That is a positive. But other than that, I request that the commission deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, we'll entertain questions from this board. Entertaining questions from the board. Any questions? Okay. No questions, we'll entertain a motion.
Oh, Mr. Chairman? Can we use a little bit more of our?
Sure, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you. I, I just would like to address um a couple of those items brought up by Mr. Lane. Uh first of all, uh on the two to four units, that is in the uh, the neighbor, the suburban neighborhood area, mentions two to four. However, the R three zoning allows up to twelve units per acre. So we're under the permitted units in the R three zone. We are slightly over uh in, when you look at the future land use plan for suburban neighborhood, but the suburban neighborhood covers the entire county. This is a specific property right on sixty-seven, a main corridor. In fact, I, I'm still not sure why it's not in the suburban corridor area because uh Highway eighty is, three oh one and forty-six are all suburban corridor. Sixty-seven, I, I guess there was a reason why it was left out of that, but uh the units do fall under what the R three does permit. And then on the um, but another reason that, that there is that many units on there is you've heard from some other properties, it's got wetlands on them, they've got floodplains. And that, that all gets factored in in determining, you know, that use those acres and determining how many units in the, those properties that were mentioned. They have wetlands on them, they have floodplains, so they couldn't use all of their property. And that makes their, their unit numbers look better than they actually are because they're all still kinda bunched up outside of those wetland areas. I, this property has absolutely no wetlands, it has no floodplains. So we're able to use the entire property and that somewhat inflates uh our, our unit count when you start comparing it to those properties that do have that. On the economic impact, if you during that same economic scale on every subdivision in the county, we wouldn't have any subdivision. She wouldn't permit them. But thankfully, the county doesn't look at just the residential subdivision when determining their tax budget. They look at all the properties. There's industrial uses, commercial uses, and you look at all and do they all uh bring in enough revenue to take care of everyone and clearly it does. And so again, you, you can focus on one particular uh unit, but thankfully the county gets to look at all of it together. So we ask you to do the same in, in recommending approval. Thank you.
What was, what was the reason for making the Stormwater Pond significantly smaller? I mean, I, I'm assuming to, to move the roads, but.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name's Hayden Rollins with Hussey.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name's Hayden Rollins with HUSYG Bell at As an Engineers for the Project. In general, we were, we had a little bit more extra attention shown in this original drawing, but that will be finalized as the design progresses if we get approval tonight. So, but we have enough space conservatively to allow for detention and stormwater maintenance for the project.
Thank you. All right, any question, other questions from this board? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Bath to deny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lane. All those in favor of denial. We have three. Those opposed. Mr. Honore? Okay. One in opposition of the denial. So your case will be heard by the commissioners in this room November the 7th. Thank y'all. Item number four, Jason Williams has submitted an application to rezon approximately 7.08 acres from R40 residential 40,000 square feet to R3 residential 15,000 square feet for the purpose of creating a multifamily housing development. The property is located at or near 16287 Highway 67. Mr. Steve Rushing will be acting as agent. Board of Commissioners will hear this case at 5:30 on November the 7th, 2024, in this room. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In favor of time, I won't go over all the details as the previous case, but, because essentially they are one development. But this property is shown on the current zoning map. This is the area that's outlined in blue, just the southern portion, that middle portion there is, or the other portion is not in consideration for the rezoning. This was the site plan that you saw in the last meeting, and I did not put the new one up. Again, just couldn't get into the PowerPoint, but I believe the applicant does have a revised site plan, which does show, again, being an R3, would have to rely on access to the arterial road of Highway 67. So when the applicant visits the podium, he'd throw up the new site plan. Again, this would be across the road from the previous item that you heard.
Okay.
But I do believe that the new site plan sticks to essentially the same dwelling unit per acre. So, and with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant, or agent, Mr. Rushing.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. It basically can be the same project. And again, in addressing Mr. Lane's issues, we did, we started this process back in June. We had a pre-meeting in May, and at that time, we had the property under contract with the Cone Estate, with the previous one, and with the Judge Fay Martin Estate on this parcel. With the interest of time, our contracts ran out, particularly with the deferral, and so we had to close on those. So, and once you file the application, you don't go back and change that. So that's reason the letter of intent was still worded with the other owners, because they were back when this process started. But Mr. Williams is just the current owner of both parcels. He has closed on both parcels and indeed is the current owner and still proposes this project for you. And they were, because they were two different owners, they were two different tax parcels. We've had this issue before. We have to bring two applications. You know, we'd love to just do one application and do them all at once, but it's because they're different tax parcels that we're required to bring two applications back to back, just like we're doing tonight. So I won't bore you with everything I just said. But everything I just said does apply to this property also. I don't know if Hayden can throw that up on our screen while we're talking, but it's essentially the same as the other one was, but with the new, can you flip that on, James?
Okay.
With the new ordinance, the 1438 ordinance that does appear to require access to Highway 67. Okay, that's getting there. If you can get it in the middle, I can zoom in on it, I think. No way. As you can see, it's essentially the same, except that, yeah, it now goes out to Highway 67. And again, that is subject also to GDOT's approval. We believe it makes sense in light of the ordinances that are in place that will protect those citizens and residents that's already there in Carrington. It should have very little impact on them. I think even the staff came to that conclusion, especially with the new designs that, again, they were not made aware of before tonight either. But we believe the new design and the ordinances protect them adequately, and we would ask that you recommend approval. Thank you.
Okay. We have Andrew Bunch signed up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to have this opportunity to speak to the board. My name is Andy Bunch. I've been asked by the HOA of Carrington South to speak on behalf of the matter of the rezoning request by Jason Williams of the two parcels in items three and four on your agenda tonight to R3. I want to say that the entire community of Carrington South agrees with everything that Mr. Lane has presented to y'all tonight about both of these parcels. As a community that is proud to be a part of Bullock County, we feel that allowing the rezoning of these two parcels will be detrimental and will have an adverse effect to our community. We have strived to keep and maintain a strong HOA, which has been there since 2007. This HOA has made our community a desired place to live, raise families, and keep property values at a steadily rising increase. When I became, came before this board on September 10th of last month, the board heard a proposal for attractive land that was submitted for approval of the same rezoning to R3 on Burkalta Road with 190 units, proposed, which is the same as item three on this agenda tonight. Carrington South area, in the Carrington South area, when the committee heard the arguments for the development, the board decided to recommend to the county commissioners to defer, or to deny, I'm sorry, this partial on Burkalta Road because of the amount of traffic that it was going to increase. Okay? As a comparison to Burkalta Road, the length of that road from Highway 67 to Patori Russian Road is three miles, roughly 1,500 or 15,840 feet. Carrington South is less than 700 feet. I know they've made changes already, but it still will affect us. And the reason I say this is going to affect us, right there, that picture alone, our turn lane starts right where their exit to the right lane starts. So there's no way DOT is going to approve that. So they're going to wind up going back to Carrington South, and that can't be done, because if they're turning right out of that neighborhood, they're going to be in our turn lane, and there's going to be multiple accidents right there. So please remember the high density of traffic on Carrington South, and I know that's kind of a mute subject with what's going on with the parcel, with the way they redid the road. But with what they've changed with their design, it's going to create more problems if, the way I'm looking at it. As anyone can see, this will create nothing but a traffic jam at any time of the day or night, especially during peak hours, and the possibility of accidents will be greatly increased. Take a look at the area around Josh Deal Road, which is growing by leaps and bounds, as all of us know. You don't see townhomes being built in the middle of residential homes that are already there. They are maintaining congruency of the types of homes in the area, keeping the zoning the same at R25 throughout all the neighborhoods on Josh Deal. And I did look that up today to make sure that was correct. Some of the reasons that we are opposing this development and rezoning of these two parcels to R3 are: We want our area to stay as a single-family homes area. Number two, we don't want all the noise congestion that this will create by increasing the amount of residents in the area to four times what is already there. We don't want to have to deal with the increased traffic and noise that the traffic will create. To show our concerns, at the last meeting, we submitted a petition from the homeowners of Carrington South that stated that we directly objected to this rezoning. At least two-thirds of our neighborhood signed that petition. Point five, also, you considering that there will be four roads adjacent, what I was thinking about when I said this was, the way they had the original design, they had all four roads coming straight out onto Carrington South. And if you figure, everybody's dumping out on those four roads every morning, and then we're coming out of Carrington South straight down, it's going to be a tremendous traffic jam. Yes, they've addressed it with their new plans, but playing for this one right here alone is going to create a problem. So I wanted y'all to be aware of what that is. With all this said, I thank you for listening to me tonight, and I implore you to deny the rezoning of these two parcels to the county commissioners. And if you don't mind, I would like to ask all Carrington South people that are here tonight to rise to show your support.
Okay.
And I thank you for your time very much.
Thank you. Mr. Rollins, do you have any comeback? Mr. Rushing?
I don't have any. There's time remaining. I didn't sign up for this item, but I did completely.
I'm sorry, sir.
Okay.
Just a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman. I won't use the rest of my time, but I know Mr. Bunch was attempting to compare this project with another one on Burkalta Road, and clearly, I think Burkalta Road has a lot of issues, is not the same as Highway 67. There's, I mean, this road is clearly built for a lot of traffic. It is a major road. I know Mr. Jason just left here trying to, I think, amend with his family, but he sent me pictures, he drove out to this area this morning and sent me pictures, and he was the only one in the picture. This was at 7:30 this morning, and I know there's going to be traffic. That is clear. But we've got traffic engineers, got one sitting right there. I mean, that's what they do. They work on this. When this does hit GDOT, they're going to probably have some changes to what we proposed here. This is just a site plan. It's not the sketch plan. There's a lot of engineering that would have to go into this that will take into account existing traffic. And then far as the, the single-family being near townhomes, there in fact are zones, being both the city of Statesboro and Bullock County, that are mixed zones. There's one already on Burkalta Road. It got annexed and approved by the city. They used a, it's an R2 zone that has both single-family and townhomes on the same tract of land. So it's not unheard of. In fact, it is a design that a lot of planners use to have mixed use on a single tract of land. So those additional items, I'd ask that you consider, and again, ask that you recommend approval. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rush. Questions from this board? Excuse me, you want?
Can I speak one more time?
Yes, sir. Still have time.
I understand about the DOT having to give your approvals and all this stuff for these turn lanes and exit lanes out of that thing. Can we ask that this board say that before they come back, before this board again, that they have that DOT approval? That way, we know that Carrington South is not going to be in the picture at all, that they're definitely going to use those lanes. And we'd like to ask that y'all require them to have that before they come back for trying to get approval again.
Okay, our decision tonight...
Is just to the county commissioners, and I understand that.
Is just to the county commissioners.
Okay. Will we still please ask you to deny this?
Can we add anything on that?
Well, I wasn't sure what, you mean, like, if they reapply for another rezoning? Is that what you're...
No, he's saying before this goes to the commissioners, could we get them to get approval from?
I don't think that's...
Require them to get approval?
Unappropriate, yeah. I don't think that's something you can require, because I don't know, I mean, you have to apply for that on how long it takes. It could be...
Mr. Chairman?
...drawn out a process and...
Well, I would just add that the sketch, the sketch plan phase for the subdivision regulations is what would, you know, give the formal stamp of approval for the subdivision, so you're stamping off on the design. It could be reasonable that, you know, they would have to know their access points before they come back to you all at sketch plan phase. But I think that would be, that would be...
I think at this point, too, GDOT might view it as premature, because the property's not, has not been rezoned, so.
But this board would have purview over access points later in the process anyway. So just, you know, for clarity's sake, I think you'd have that ability to make sure of their concerns.
Okay. I just want to be clear and fair to everybody. All right, any questions from this board? Entertain a motion.
Motion to deny.
I'm a motion to deny. I'm a Mr. Bath, second from Mr. Lane. All those in favor of denial. We have three. Those opposed. One, Ms. Reiner. And that will be heard by the commissioners November the 7th, in this room. Thank y'all. And if y'all would step on out, since we have them to leave the doors open, I would appreciate it. Give him just a second. There'll be room for those in the hall to move in and have a seat. All right, if I could ask the board, again, we'll move to the next item. Item number five. Kyle Hayden has submitted an application to rezon approximately 10.55 acres from R80 residential 80,000 square feet to R3 multifamily residential 15,000 square feet for the purpose of creating a multifamily, multifamily housing development. The property is located at 424 Brandon Drive. Kyle Hayden will be serving as agent. The board of commissioners will hear this 5:30 November the 7th, in this room. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item five is one that was deferred from last month's meeting as well. This approximate location is on the west side of Statesboro, just outside of the bypass, just north of Cypress Lake Road. Again, this is Brandon, Brandon Drive. The zoning for the area, you do have some parcels zone R2 and are used as really more like an R3, but then residential zoning for, I guess, all around the property, R80, R25, and R40. But again, there's one structure on the property, but it's, I believe, vacant. I believe that one of the issues that the board wanted to see when they came back tonight was a new site plan that was, you know, maybe a little clearer that you could see. So this is what was submitted, and there are some... And there are some, you know, some changes to it. But I'll let the applicant go over, go over those changes. And this is the property, again, as it sits currently. And this, this land use would also fall into that access on Arterial or Collector Street, which Brandon, Brandon Drive is not, either of those. So the rezoning can, decision can still go forward, but this board would have to, you know, hear a variance at a later date. So you can, you know, keep that in mind as well. But with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cody Rogers, who is agent for the applicant.
Good evening, Cody Rogers, EMC Engineering. I won't bore you all with the details, because most of you were here last month. As Mr. Pope said, we were deferred last month. And really, the feedback we got last month was clean up the site plan, which we did. Thanks, James, for bringing that up. And would you, there you go. We also did another colored site plan, just to kind of illustrate the amount of green space on this project. That was one of the concerns that was brought up by this board last month. And I ran the numbers on it. It's, don't want this quoted here. 71.75% green space, 28.25% developed, which would be the road, the sidewalk, the driveways, and the homes themselves. So as far as green space goes, it is definitely abundant. As Mr. Pope said, we do have R-2 abutting probably three-quarters to two-thirds of our northern property line there. We are separated by a large wooded buffer. And we would have a buffer surrounding our property as well as obviously in the backside where the wetlands are that would not be disturbed along Highway 301. We did add a detention pond, and we moved the playground to the back, whereas it was up near the front at the mail kiosk last month. These are individual septic fields, and there would be a community well system.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for seeing me and allowing me to speak. And to the board, I appreciate the opportunity. Before I start, I'd like to have those who are opposed to this development stand up also. Thank you. I'm Stacy Webb, and I reside at 107 Lancaster Point. And while I do not represent all of the residents on Barclay Downs, several of my neighbors have asked that I speak on their behalf. First of all, I'd like to address the departmental, departmental review indicates that five negative impacts are there, six neutral impacts, and zero positive impacts. I don't see how the departmental review was approved with five negatives and zero positives. One of the biggest negative impacts is a negative fiscal impact, showing that public expenditures will exceed revenues from the development by $34,979. The review also shows our school system, already at capacity, will probably add 29 new students from this development. Law enforcement capabilities are already exceeding capacity, as pointed out in the review. EMS and fire service report indicates the development would create a staffing deficiency as well as the possible need for new equipment. The recreation open space impact would require the need for county to increase public park facilities. All of these negatives will require taxpayer dollars. And I don't think I have to remind anybody that our county taxes have doubled, almost doubled in the past two years. While the traffic impact is indicated as neutral, I would ask that the committee and commissioners visit the site to see how traffic might really be impacted. There's a dangerous hill at the entrance site of the development where the sheriff's department has placed speed indicator numerous times to help people slow down. Additionally, drivers entering onto Brandon Drive from Hazelwood going towards Cypress Lake Road do not have a good line of sight because of a curve on Brandon Drive for traffic coming from the proposed development. Turning onto Cypress Lake Road, especially a left turn from Brandon Drive, will be a real test of courage. The county department reviews, review indicates 343 new daily trips on Brandon Drive because of this development. There's a large increase over what exists currently. I do not believe the proposed roundabout near High Point Road and Country Club Road is going to solve any of the problems that would be created by this development or the new development at High Point and Country Club Road. In addition to the negative impacts and traffic issues, I think the character of our neighborhood has always been single-family, low-density. Our neighborhoods, Hazelwood, Barclay Downs, Country Squire, and all those residents who live on Brandon Drive are comprised of residents who have lived there for decades. We purchased this property knowing that it was a single-family, low-density area, and we kept our communities neat and clean. We feel the zoning committee should help keep our property free from multi-family, high-density developments. I also feel approval of this request will be a spot rezoning that will help a developer, but will harm hundreds of individual home sites with increased traffic in a more transient neighborhood and a loss in the value of our properties. But I might offer a solution to this problem. Instead of 47 new units, possibly develop eight to 10 single-family residences in this area. In conclusion, I hope you or, I hope you have or will visit this area to see the traffic issues as well as the negative impact this development will have on our neighborhood. If you haven't, I would ask it wanted, you would postpone this approval until you do. Otherwise, I would ask that you deny this opportunity. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you, and I hope you will listen to our concerns. Thank you.
Chair, your man.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me here to speak on behalf of my friends and neighbors in my area where I live. I've used the information that was provided on the application by Mr. Hayden and also by the county review that was done. And I think the first point I want to make, I'm basically going to address the eight points in the review, the standards. That's kind of what Stacy was talking about, whether they impact and how they impact. So I'm going to start with those. The first one is, is the proposed use suitable in view of the zoning and development of adjacent and nearby property? And the current permanent density is .545 units per acre. The proposed density is 4.45 units per acre. That's an increase of 716%. That's a lot. The second one is, will the proposed use adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby properties? And I saw the first, I think it was the second and fourth slides that were up, the development itself. If you can compare that to the surrounding areas and see the difference in the lot sizes, could you put the fourth one back up of the? Okay, that's the proposed, and then the one of, there you go. Now, that's a big difference compared to that. For, that's, that's a good visual of the vast change that we're going to have in our rural community setting of the neighborhoods to a high-density, multifamily housing development, which borders on wetlands. The third point I wanted to make were, are there substantial reasons why the property cannot or should not be used as currently zoned? No. I mean, it's currently zoned. That's what the history of it's been. Hazelwood was developed in 1979. It's always been, single-family, nice parcels of land around there. The homeowners living in the established developments on Brandon Drive, that'd be Hazelwood, Barclay Downs, Country Squire, there's others, too. Brandon Drive is only two miles, so we're all neighbors there. They purchased these properties specifically based on the nature of single-family homes and roomy parcels. The homes have been very well maintained through the decades, and the area is desirable for that reason. This large development would change the entire nature of the area and degrade the home values. Such a drastic change from R-80, and we've been talking about changes, people want to do it from R-25, R-30. R-80 to R-3 is extreme. It's, it's this, if this type of jump is acceptable, then zoning more or less becomes meaningless to me. Another address I wanted to make about the excessive on the burdens, the excessive burdens on the public facilities, the streets and things like that. In regard to the streets, Brandon Drive, like I just said, is only 2.1 miles in length from stop sign to stop sign. There's no paved edge on the two-lane road. This high-density development would most definitely impact this. And there seems to be a conflict, and I might not have been looking at it right, but the way I was reading it between the engineering report and the Bullock County Department review of the actual number of daily in-and-outs. So that might need to be looked at a little more closely. Is the proposed use compatible with the purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan? I'm not sure about the, this is, this is new, all new to me. But if that's the county comprehensive plan or whatever, but I'd need to see an issue of that, if that's what it's about. But to me, if we're talking about the purpose and intent, it would appear that the purpose and intent of the developer is to maximize profit for a few over the nature and value of long-established property of many. When our property was purchased, we understood the regulations and we acted accordingly. And that's what I reasonably expect to be upheld by the zoning board. I would challenge the zoning board to show me any apartment and townhouse complex of this size that has been, that has maintained the aesthetics and the integrity of the property after decades, as the vast majority of the single-family homes have in the Brandon Drive area. Item six wants to know if it's consistent with the purpose and intent of the proposed zoning. Yes, it's housing, but is it consistent? Not, far from it. And I, I know the planning goes with the future, looking at the future, items seven and eight, and even one through six appear to be based on a yet-to-be future. But according to the county review on item number seven, they say there's no possibility of changing conditions not anticipated. Well, I have to say, hoping for the best without at least acknowledging the worst is dangerous management. And just kind of to wrap it all up, I think the developers need to be held to a high standard. And jumping over layers of density units per acre should only happen in the rarest of situations. There can and should be reason on both sides when it comes to reasonable change in development. But citizens should not have to fight tooth and nail to have what's already established. And I also want you to please consider that Chatham, Bryan, Effingham, and all these other counties, in addition to Bullock, are in a huge building boom, obviously. And there's thousands upon thousands of housing units that are underway or on the books within a 50-mile radius of here. And the fabric of our lovely, and a lot of lovely communities in this established area can be changed with just a stroke of your pen. So I please ask that you respect the history of the here and now, of myself and my community neighbors that are here, who have been in for the long haul, taking care of our properties, helping each other, paying our taxes, and enjoying our investment in our rural-based community homes. So I ask that you would please deny. And thank you.
Our time has expired. David Seaman, you here? If he'd come up, I'll give you a minute. We got 16 more. If I could give everybody extra time, we'll be here all night.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the, your extension of the time. I am David Seaman, and I live at 422 Brandon Drive. Therefore, I'm that little notch just to the north of the 10-acre parcel you're talking about. All the previous speakers, even on other requests for zoning change, have very well expressed many of the ideas that I wish to bring tonight. I will just dwell on one, and that is sanitation. During the recent hurricane power outage and water outage, we were able to dip buckets of water out of our swimming pool in order to do the flushing. I don't see anything like that happening with septic after septic after septic going down that slope toward the bypass. I, I think that alone would be a reason for denying this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rogers, you want to come, come back?
Yes, those were good presentations. The comment regarding zoning around counties, other counties, Chatham, Bryan, Effingham, and there being other character areas where this zoning would, would mess up the, the current character area of this neighborhood. There are not many areas around town, especially around Bullock County, if we're going to look at the county only, that are currently zoned for multifamily at all, because it's not a product that's traditionally been available. It's not a product that could usually be developed on, on any of these properties. So if you look at Bullock County as a whole, I, I think you'd have a hard time finding a large cluster, or even a small cluster, of land that is zoned for multifamily that hasn't already been developed, because most of those zonings were rezonings. Someone came up here and asked for a rezoning to cluster that development. And I do understand the character of this particular neighborhood. This neighborhood is closer to the city than many others would be. It is not an agricultural field. It is not far outside the city limits, and it is inside of the comprehensive plan.
All right, questions from this board? I'll ask, what was your source of water for this development?
Community well.
Which is the one across the road?
That was a possibility that we were talking about without having to drill another well.
Okay.
But if we needed to, we could drill one here.
We would have to meet 500 gallons per, per minute. So that well would be suitable for that.
The existing well, you mean?
Existing well, yeah.
Right, we would have to look at the design to see if that's a possibility. I know that first item that was being discussed, they talked about possibly drilling a second well and supplementing that system. So it would just come down to who, who wants to own it? Who wants to drill it? And would the current water system owner want to be involved in that at all? But if not, we would have to design a water system capable of providing 500 gallons per minute.
Okay, I'd like to ask our county engineer, the runoff from this subdivision is going to affect the Cypress Lake Road, which is already right at the point of flooding anytime we get a large rain. Is this going to make it go over the road?
So by our drainage ordinance, they would have to design the drainage, do a hydrology analysis that would detain enough water so that post-development, they would be releasing the same amount of water or less as pre-development. Usually, you do that by detention. And I know he was showing some detention on the site. So if they follow the ordinance correctly, theoretically, we shouldn't have any issues. It would go into wetlands, I guess. It will go into wetlands, I guess, down towards the bypass, and it would flow back towards Cypress Lake, I believe. There's a culvert, I think it was under Cypress Lake Road.
Yeah, and it stays right at about a foot from overflow and when we get a decent rain.
Right. So if they follow the ordinance, our drainage ordinance, then should not create, you know, a whole lot of change as to what's there now.
And if I could expound upon that, we would also produce a downstream analysis and look at what's called the 10% basin, and look at the next downstream impediment, which would, sounds like it would be that culvert, to be honest with you. We'd have to verify that, just to make sure. But we would look at that culvert specifically to make sure that our impact, even with the detention, would not increase flows there.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Any discussion? Entertain a motion?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
I'll move into your night.
All right. Have a motion to deny by Mr. Lane. Have a second, have a second by Ms. Reiner. All those in favor of denial, that's unanimous. We will recommend to the commissioners when they hear this case on November the 7th, Y'all would, y'all would please leave quietly and move on out so we can continue. Please move on out so we can continue. You want to close the doors now? Mr. Patton's got them. Thank y'all. Eagle Creek Investments has submitted an application to rezone approximately 42.5 acres from Ag-5, Agricultural 5 Acres, to R-40, Residential 40,000 square feet, for development of a single-family residential neighborhood. The property is located at 6417 Arcola Road. John Dodson will be acting as the agent. The Board of Commissioners will hear this at 5:30 November the 7th, 2024, in this room. Mr. Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This case, I believe some of you on the board have seen this case previously, where it was requested for rezoning. General location is just north of Mud Road on Arcola Road, as shown on the map here. As you stated, the current zoning is Ag-5, and that's the area of properties which are also zoned as Ag-5, Agricultural 5 Acres. As you can see, an aerial of the property shows that it's, either currently is or was used in agricultural setting. There is timber on the, on the property as well, and agricultural use surrounding the Site plan displays 31 lots that would be, or could be created with the rezoning to an R-40 zoning. And then we've included some pictures at the time we placed the zoning, zoning notice sign. And with that, staff report shows that we recommend a denial of the rezon request. But if approval is granted, we do have some staff, staff conditions for your consideration. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. John Dodson.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak this evening. As James said, this property is located on Arcola Road. It is 1.7 miles from US Highway 80. It is also a half a mile from Mud Road, which accesses the demarcation line of the character area and the non-character. So this one is not in it, but it's close to it. Maybe that'll help, we'll see. The site does contain wetlands at the northeast corner and the southeast corner. The wetlands will not be impacted by this development. We propose to add, to add stormwater detention to address any runoff that will, that will occur. It is not located in or adjacent to a flood zone, which is another plus for the development. We'll have a community water system, individual septic tanks, and we feel like we can make a nice development out of this. Now, we are asking for R-40, not R-25, which is a difference, basically one-acre lots. I'll also point out that in, it was the end of 2023 or in early '24, the commissioners voted to approve a property that's well outside the character areas, located on the Brooklyn-Denmark Road. So it's not, this is not out of line what has been approved, so we would ask for a favorable vote from the Board, from the PNC Board tonight. I'll try to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, we have several people to sign up. We'll hear from them, and then we'll come back. Mr. Dodson?
Mr. Chairman and Board members, I thank you for giving me some time to talk about this. I've talked about it before, about a year ago. Mr. Pope, I want to thank you for your denial request on this, and I agree with it. I live off of 457 Acres Lane, which is right across, I guess it would be due north of this, or going back towards Statesboro off of Mud Road. And he's right, it is a wetland. It drains from where I live, all the way down through to this property. But as you look at it, you know, if it was an Ag-5, I wouldn't even be here. I think it would make a beautiful subdivision with eight houses on it versus 30 that they're talking about, and you're talking about the kids. If you figure everybody has two kids per household, now you're looking at 16 kids if it was an eight-house versus 60. And where are they going to go? If we're already talking about the schools being at a limit, Stillson's already overflowing, and my son goes to southeast Bullock, and I know it's full now. The next thing I want to talk about is the safety up and down right at that corner of Mud Road and Arcola. Just yesterday, my wife was there and seen a car just blow right through it. So it happens all the time, and if you're going to have extra people versus 32 people, if it's eight households for a, a five-acre Ag-5 development versus probably 60 or 70 for, if it goes to the, the 31 lots. That's, I've talked about schools and the growth plan. We have a growth plan that's already in place, and even though we can ask for variances, why don't we stick with our Ag-5, and then we won't even be here? So that's where I'm at with it. But I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. And I'll remind you to watch the clock, because there's three more signed up.
Thank you. I'm Diane Smith. I live at 6701 Arcola, just north of it. I joined this property. It's dangerous. There's a bad curve. I've come close to getting hit coming out of my driveway. As I said earlier, my husband passed away at home seven years ago. Still haven't seen the ambulance. They just can't seem to find us. That's beside the point, but if you'll leave it at Ag-5, as Mr. Hutchins said, I would not even be here. And I just think that Ag-5 would be wonderful. I'm not against having neighbors, but not that many neighbors. But it's just such a dangerous route, and surely the developers can earn as much money on Ag-5. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and Committee, I appreciate y'all having me up here. And I live on 555 Acres Lane, across the way again. And again, what they're talking about is drainage. The drainage does come from my area. And when I say my area, I've had a lake in my yard when everything's backed up. And when it comes through over here on the highway, none of that's been dug out, the ditches are still filled up and everything. That sewage has to go somewhere, and that's wetlands. And this past rain that we had not too long ago, when it cut out Arcola Road, when it messed up the bridge down there, that was almost, what, two months? People, when they come through, they're in a hurry. They've got to go either Mud Road, all the way to 80, or they got to go to Neville's. They do fly through that intersection. I've almost been killed twice. I had a transfer truck, a log truck slide across that thing one day. I blew my horn like crazy. He didn't even stop. So the impact of having more people in here, Ag-5, let them come. I don't mind that. I moved over here for Ag-5 to get five acres. But the impact that'll happen on there, on that curve right there, when you come around, it looks long, but they're running 70 and 80 mile an hour, just before they get to that stop sign. So when people go to pull out right here, you better watch out, is all I got to tell you. But that, that's one of the main things, is just stopping the building, you know? Taxes are going higher. I'm a senior, just like some of the others, and I don't want to see the impact of all these people coming in from everywhere that's never been in the country. We don't know what, where they're coming from or whatever. And I said one time before, I did security business for 44 years, and I know what happens when some of these subdivisions come in and the impact comes. Then you start having all the robberies, you start having all the riffraff, everything comes in. But when you've got it to where you've got just, you know, five acres, and people want to maintain it and keep it and live a good life with their children, and again, with the school impact, that's going to impact that too. I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. The last one, I can't read the name, 7362 Cleto Road?
Yes, sir. It's, name is Tommy Robinson.
Okay.
I'd like to defer my time to Reverend Robinson, please.
Hi. Actually, I am speaking for friends of mine, Ron and Jennifer Carstens, at 909 Bayberry Court, off of Cottonwood Trail. Anyone that's here to support the denial of this petition, could you stand really quickly? Okay. So basically, the staff, again, has done a great job, very impartial information, nice little packet you guys all already have. It is outside of the development district, four negative impacts, six neutral. The fiscal and economic, we know that it takes years after we put a new development in to recoup what it costs to put that in. We know that fire, police, EMS, schools, all those are already stretched thin. And so just to reiterate all those things that the staff said in the report, is, and the people that have made it out here tonight, just, we ask that you deny this request. And the, was it Brooklyn-Denmark subdivision? I hope that that's an exception to the rule and not the rule. And again, thank you for all your work to get the information together.
What's your address?
7362 Cleto Road. And the Carstens are 909 Bayberry Court.
Okay, they're not here, so.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Dodson, you want to come back up?
One quick item. I know you'll have a lot still on your agenda tonight. As I said, stormwater will be addressed, sewage will be taken care of by individual septic tanks, one of the, and a community water system. So again, we would ask for your support. Thank you.
Okay. I'll remind the, the board that the staff did recommend denial. Any questions from this board? Adam?
James, has it been six months since we heard this? It hasn't been that long ago, I feel like. Not that that's relevant, but I thought we had to wait six months, and I want to say it's only been three or four since we've heard this.
It's been.
No, he's interested in the question.
I don't specifically recall. I mean, I don't, I was looking at the applicant to see if he remembers.
It wasn't, it hasn't been denied by the Board of Commissioners. It has been withdrawn two times. Somebody may have been correct.
So, okay, I, I thank you for clarifying that for me, because there was not a decision by the Board of Commissioners that that six-month rule did not, not apply. But yeah, it would, it would be very relevant if that were the case.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. Motion to deny. Have a motion for Mr. Barth to deny, to have a second. Second from Ms. Trumbull, all those in favor of denial, that's unanimous. Thank y'all. And if y'all would like to leave, please leave quietly so we can move on. Next item, number seven, Blitch Place Land Company. Elizabeth V. Veale, as agent for Blitch Place Land Company, has applied to rezon 57.7 acres from Ag-5, Agricultural 5 Acres, to R-25, Residential 25,000, 25,000, for the proposed development of a subdivision. The property is located on Old Riggs Mill Road. Elizabeth Veale will be acting as agent. The Board of Commissioners will hear this at 5:30 November the 7th, in this room. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As shown on the map, the approximate location is to the, to the west of Statesboro. It is outside of the comprehensive plans suburban neighborhood character, so it does fit into the rural open space. However, there are, I guess, some developments and some precedent, excuse me, for proximity to this proposed development, that there are higher density units. Sorry, I can't talk. As you can see with the zoning map here, there's R-3 units to the south along Old Riggs Mill Road. But other than that, everything else is on Ag-5. Some of the units, some of the units down Old Riggs Mill, I think may predate zoning, so before '94. And then the ones closer to this development have progressed in recent years. Not entirely sure, Mark, that's, I thought the site plan was in here, but we'll see. Yeah, if you don't mind, throw it up here. Yeah, I think that's got it. All right, so again, the request, the number of lots is 69, as shown by the site plan. Staff recommended a denial of the request, however, conditions are recommended if approval is granted. With that, I'll turn it over to the agent.
Hi, Mr. Rogers?
Hey. Cody Rogers, EMC Engineering, acting on behalf of the developer here tonight. As Mr. Pope said, 69 total units. We are Ag-5 currently, proposing R-25. Going down Old Riggs Mill, you will find Fraser Field, and then Bull Bay, and across the street on Old Riggs Mill, you also find Jessica Lane, all with R-3 zoning right there. So this would obviously be less dense than R-3 would ever allow. And we are actually not even building to R-25 maximum density. We're at 1.19 units per acre currently. Would have a male kiosk, we'd have a community well, and we would have, of course, individual
Okay. We have several signed up. Let me get them, and then we'll come back to you, Mr. Rogers. Let me get them, and then we'll come back to you, Mr. Rogers. Ms. Key? Mr. Key?
Thank you, Chairman. My name's Randy Key. I live on one twenty Keyacans Road. My farm butts up to this property, and I'm tired of seeing farmland disappear. Perfectly good land, once this house is put on, it's rent, it's no more agriculture. And I don't like to come out in my field and then look and see houses everywhere. We thought we was in the community far enough back that we didn't have to worry about none of this, but it's all been built right around us now. We've had our farm for over a hundred years, and I'm going to try to keep it that way. But that's basically, and all the traffic that's going to be on, this is the first time I've seen this map, so I'm trying to see where the traffic comes out on to.
It comes out on the Keyacans Road.
That's what I'm thinking. Our road right there, and it cannot handle that kind of traffic. It's dangerous enough now to try to get out on Old Riggs Mill Road from Keyacans Road without getting run over. And it's just, that would be extremely dangerous for us.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I appreciate your time and consideration. My name is Susan Steinbeck Harrison. I'm the managing landowner at Branch Creek Farm, and our farmland is adjacent to the parcel. Mrs. Jane Kason, who's a little bit hard of hearing, asked me to speak on our behalf as well. We are opposed to the rezoning of the parcel. We feel like this dense development will put pressure on these adjacent historic land uses. The Smart Bullock 2040 Comprehensive Plan shows this area as rural open space character and natural open space character. And we've been investing in our land for these types of uses for a long time, some very recently investments, just in the past year. The land now is used for agricultural row crops. There's some of the best agricultural farmland in the county is in this area.
That's right.
Growing timber, hunting, and my family's been doing long-leaf pine conservation and burning in this, on this land for over a hundred years. There's also wetland Cypress swamp conservation land there, and that's very important because we back up to, and are in the headwaters of the large Cypress Lake. And recently, Hurricane flooding earlier this year almost overtopped the dam at Cypress Lake. And this plan for such, this dense development, this housing in this area, in this really immediate area, will create more storm runoff and flooding there and flood onto our land. This development would increase our insurance rates. It would have environmental detriments of runoff and drainage, water quality issues, and increased possible flooding, like I mentioned. We request that the Commission deny the development.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Kason was signed up to speak, so.
Thank you very much. We talked about it, and she said she would communicate with you because I've got this little problem about my hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Rogers, you want to address any of that?
I want to address much of that specifically, but just pose a question here. I have the unique position to be here representing a more dense development closer to town, and then here, obviously, a little bit further from town with a little bit less density to it. One point one nine acres versus the previous case I spoke on was a little over four. I just ask you, what would be acceptable? Besides Ag five?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions from this board? You mentioned your water system was an existing well, no?
No, sir. It did, it well.
New well, new well system, totally. Okay.
Any plans for water runoff? I don't see a pond or any...
So the hydrology, the way the runoff numbers are calculated for an agricultural field, the runoff is actually higher than when we calculate it for a single-family subdivision where we have deep-rooted grasses usually. We end up having more grass coverage and vegetation in a post-development after the subdivisions have been put in than you do with, you have row crops.
Okay. What about your lots adjoining the currently farmed ag land buffer?
Are you asking, is there a buffer?
Yes.
Yes, sir, it is. This image right here doesn't show it very well, but there's a twenty-five-foot buffer around the entire property. And then we actually, if you'll notice, those half-circles along the northern property line are well buffers, where we took into account existing wells at those other, those existing houses, and took that into account when laying out the lots for usable septic area.
Okay. Any other questions from this board? Entertain a motion? Staff did recommend denial with, if approval, there are conditions.
The President, moderate, I'll move to deny with the condition also. Deny.
Okay. Have a motion for denial, to have a second. Second from Mr. Bath, all of those in favor of denial. That's unanimous, and that'll be heard by the Commissioners on November the seventh. Since we have been here almost two hours, we're going to take a five-minute break. We'll actually start back at eight oh five, so it'll be seven minutes. Nine more. Hey, Joel.
I missed a doctor's appointment yesterday. I was supposed to get my lab.
Yeah. I'll tell you what. I got to get on this mission.
And then they say you get on the portal, too.
I'm trying to be honest with you.
I'm trying to be honest with you.
Thank you, Mr. Pope, Chairman Chandler, and board. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I appreciate what y'all do for this county and give your time. I'm Jimmy Anderson, a local surveyor, representing Robert K. Bell Jr. Investments. We're asking to rezone one hundred twenty-six acres from Ag five to R forty. Have one interest on Old River Road and several roads accessing off of Windy Hill Road. None of the lots would access Macedonia Road. We have some lots that back up to it, but none of them would access that. We've also, along the rear of those lots on Macedonia Road, we're leaving a thirty-foot road easement should Macedonia Road need to be paved in the future. We would be leaving that area that could be done that without having to obtain right away from those landowners. We propose to build homes in the three hundred thousand dollar range. This property has good soil for septic tanks. It's not in a flood zone, good road access. Staff stated there is no evidence of this zoning proposed change would injure or detract from existing parcels. There are several one-to-three-acre parcels adjacent to this track. This track has been a timber track in the past. The timber was cut and harvested, and it's been replanted. So it's not been in cultivation, would not be taking land out of cultivation. Staff review recommended five conditions. So it's not been in cultivation, would not be taking land out of cultivation. Staff review recommended five conditions, and should you choose to rezone, we're in agreement with those five conditions. Thank you for hearing me, and I'll try to answer any questions I might have. Thank you.
I defer to John Hodges.
John Hodges.
Okay. I defer to Tommy Robinson.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. So, thank you for your time. Also want to thank the Planning and Zoning staff for the do not recommend recommendation that has been approved for this, that's on this rezoning. I do want to ask for those that are here, how many of those oppose the rezoning? Would you please stand? Okay. Thank you. Any of those that support the rezoning, would you please raise your hand? The activity and the supportive community is zero for this activity. So we are asking that you do take the recommendation of the staff. This area is defined as a rural open space. It is over three miles direct from the nearest suburban area. That's a direct flight, the crow flies. It's over six miles if you take the closest dirt road to get to that area. So it is significantly outside of the area and the zone. So, there's no benefit for this to the Cletto community. It only further deteriorates the rural open space criteria. Impact factors from the staff meeting is that there's seven negative, four neutral, and zero positive for this community, this rezoning. There's a significant ecosystem impact, especially with the proximity to the Oguichi River and the surrounding woodlands and swamp. This area backs very close to that, to the Oguichi River. There's no infrastructure to support such a development. It's a Tulane Road. There's no public transportation out there. We currently have a significantly understaffed fire and law enforcement and public works departments, and to add this to it is just not feasible. And it is not remotely close to either the Black Creek character area or the Interstate 16 nodes location, which is where these type of developments should be occurring. Planning and zoning's mission is to promote orderly growth, development, redevelopment, and preservation of the unincorporated areas of the county. This proposed development is the definition of spot zoning and urban sprawl. And the 2040-2045 comprehensive plans both say that preserving agricultural land and agriculture as a cornerstone of our community. It is not a, it is also to preserve open space and to preserve the rural character while building resilience and supporting agriculture and ecotourism. Also, the final analysis in those reports is many properties are designated as prime agricultural land, representing a great natural resource that should be preserved. So again, we ask that you do deny this request for rezoning. Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Hodges. I live on Old River Road, just down the road from this parcel. First off, thank y'all for giving y'all's time. I know it's very valuable, especially this long. Do the officials here as well. So, one question I have for the officials too is there, I saw two signs on this road. One was R 40, and then I saw another posted that said R 25. So, is that in works or no?
No, I was made aware of that when I checked. I didn't, I didn't see it. I'm not saying that's not the case, but the rezoning is for R 40.
Well, that would be something I would like to have noted as well, so.
The application is for R 40.
Okay, okay.
There is a variance for the track later in tonight's meeting. That would require a sign, but I'm not sure on that.
So, I'm a big believer in allowing a landowner to do what they want to do with their land as long as it doesn't affect our county resources, adjacent landowners, and then most precious to us is the river. The closest point of this property is about a quarter of a mile from our river. And so, I think it would make the adjacent landowners, as well as the people who enjoy using the river, you know, besides the landowners, feel a lot more at ease if some type of independent environmental studies were requested or required before allowing this density so close to our river. So, and not including concerns about the river, I want, in the nature of saving time for others to speak, you know, the ancillary, or the services of the county, obviously, as Mr. Robinson pointed out, we're already behind the curve on that, and allowing this density would be unthinkable. And I think that, you know, our local community in that area would like to support our adjacent landowners. However, I think the density is what goes into question. Once again, Ag 5 or something that is, you know, if you're going to develop and put open, you know, open rural area spaces, I think that is what the community would get behind and support. So, anyhow, I'll stop with that. Thank y'all for y'all's time.
Thank you, sir. Hilda Hendricks.
I'm Hilda Hendricks. I'm a homeowner that is right across Old River Road from this. And I'm here to tell you, I moved out here in 1987 looking for a quiet, peaceful place to live. And everybody in that area takes pride in their property, and they take care of it. It's a safe place to live, and we'd like for it to stay that way. We want to live in an area where we can feel free to roam, and that's what we've got right now. The house is directly across from the land where the rezoning request is. One of our concerns is all the extra traffic that'll be on Old River Road. That traffic moves at 60 miles an hour up and down that road. There's two peak times, for sure, that there's a lot of traffic on the road, and it's conceivable there'll be a lot more, there'll be a lot of accidents. We've had two accidents right near our house where people were flying and missed the curve, and one of them actually ended up upside down in our yard. So, we have some other personal concerns too, but my main concern is that since we've been on that property, we dug a dig well when we first moved there in 1987. And since we've been on that property, both my family and the family next door to me has had to add more pipe to our well. So, I'm kind of concerned that if you put something like this over here, what are we going to do for water? You know? And I agree too that it is mighty close to the river, and they're saying not in a flood zone, but Hurricane Debbie would argue that point because it came way up Williams Landing Road, which Macedonia Road runs into Williams Landing Road. And this looks like, how many, how many homesites is that? Like 200 or something? What is it? This is the first time I saw this map, so.
He says 120.
A bunch. Anyway, I just stand here and, you know, I agree with what Dr. Hodges said about, you know, I believe people should be able to do what, with their land what they want to do, but this is just too much. I have some questions that are totally unanswered. If y'all were to approve this, will there be any restrictions or requirements on the size or types of homes built? How will this subdivision be organized? Will Mr. Bell sell the homesites, or will he rent the homesites? Will there be a HOA to come in and govern this property? And y'all answered where the entrances and exits will be, but I don't think there's anybody sitting in here that wants these entrances and exits to be like, on the, you know, like two on Windy Hill Road. Windy Hill Road's a small road. Two coming out at my house, I wouldn't want that either. So, there's just so many things that are just not right about this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have 51 seconds, 49 seconds left. Karen McLean.
Thank you. I'm going to try to go really quickly. I live, I have property on Macedonia Road that I inherited from my family. It's been in my family for hundreds of years. Most of the people on Macedonia Road are family people that have inherited property over time. We want to live in the country. If I wanted to live in town in a subdivision, I'd be in town. I think everybody that was here today is against any more growth for Bullock County. We're almost a savanna already, a small savanna version, and we don't want to be that. We are in the rural area. We want to remain rural. And what you're effectively doing by approving something like that, I'm against anything going there, like this. But what you're effectively doing, or those of us that do own property and inherited property, you're pushing us out. Because my children, my grandchildren, we're all on Macedonia, and when crime increases from that number of people, when you leave that property, your only exit to town quickest is Macedonia Road up to Highway 24. If you've not been out there, go look. People aren't going to go Old River Road. They're going to go Macedonia Road to 24, right past where we live, right past our property, right past where my grandchildren are in the yard. Crime picks up. Right now, we're fine. We don't have crime going on out that way and let some stuff down at the Williams Landing. But you're going to push people like me that have inherited that property out because I'm not going to have my children, grown children, and my grandchildren living where there's going to be a bunch of crime happening in our area. And they already go whoever, fast, on that road. My son lives on the curve on that road, and that's ridiculous.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our time is. Time is up. We do have four more for the record that were signed up to speak. Sorry, y'all don't have time to, we don't have time to hear more. Mr. Anderson, you want to?
I have anything.
Okay. Any questions from this board? Mr. Baath?
Mr. Anderson, you have any information on how 124 septic tanks could affect the river at that, that kind of distance?
You know, we couldn't help probably govern what happens with the new heritage.
Sir, if you're not going to be quiet, you need to leave. Okay. Any other questions from this board? Entertain a motion? Have a motion for Mr. Lane to deny. Second for Mr. Baath. All those in favor of denial, that's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Next item. That item will be heard November the 7th by the Board of Commissioners at 5:30. Item number nine, Blue Water Bullock LLC has applied to rezone 38.54 acres from Ag 5 to R 3 multifamily residential, minimum lot size 15,000 square feet, to develop a town home subdivision. Property is located at 285 Herman Rushing Road. Steve Rushing will be acting as agent. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, this is the approximate location. It's just to the south of Statesboro. Herman Rushing Road is, it is a local road that goes into Burke Culture, which would be a collector road. But it's, as shown here on the zoning map, there's area zoning that is single-family R 25 zoning. Statesboro recently annexed the property, I guess that'd be to the south or southwest. But across Herman Rushing Road, there is a zoning for R 2 for Statesboro, which I think is Mr. Rushing mentioned earlier tonight. They do have townhomes and single-family homes proposing, or going on that, on that parcel. But area zoning, again, is kind of, it's in that area along 67 and Burke Culture that is an area of proposed growth, of growth that, you know, I think there's some things to work through in zoning with all this, with a variation of type. But currently, the property is, well, as shown with the aerial, but there are units that are proposed to abut the Chatham Place subdivision, just to the, I guess that would be to the south or, yes, south of the development. There is a Georgia Power easement, which creates a number, I think about three acres of green, green space that would not be able to be developed. You know, as proposed in, in the zoning items, it's not always what we, the final outcome of zoning. For instance, this development would technically require two entrances based on the number of units. This one would also have to come back and get a variance for Herman Rushing Road, which currently is on, or considered a local street.
Can you scream? It's on airplane, I'm sorry.
So, this is Herman Rushing Road as it is. This is looking towards the Chatham Place subdivision. You see the power lines to the left, in the left of the photo. And then this is looking across of where, you know, City of Statesboro annexed. So there is, with that annexation, water and sewer are going to be, you know, across the road. So, you just keep that in mind. But we do recommend some conditions if approval is granted. So with that, I'll turn it over to the agent, Mr. Rushing.
Thank you, James. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, I am Steve Rushing, and as far as I know, not related to Herman Rushing Road. I am here tonight representing Blue Water Bullock LLC. Now, that is a new company, but it's formed by four builders here in town. Kelly Brown, Joey Cody, Randy Childs, and Jason Franklin. They have just recently acquired this property from Mr. Eugene Anderson. They are proposing this development that you see there, and the main reason is, as Mr. Pope alluded to, it's across the street from now the city limits of the City of Statesboro, which will have water and sewer at that point, which we intend to connect to so that we won't have all those septic tanks and wells that you've been hearing about tonight. There are, as you can see, some wetlands across the back, but we will, they're all on the back. We won't have any interference with those. There's a small flood plain in the far corner of the wetlands, which will be nowhere near with our development. And you notice we've put, proposed a detention pond between this development and those wetlands that will govern the release of any water from this development. So, with the stormwater already anticipated through that detention pond, we do have just the one access proposed, as you can see with the, just the lay of the land that seemed to be the most appropriate, and if we need to, obviously, we'll seek variance on the double road access. We did have a traffic study, however, and the only thing that it has suggested is a left turn lane into this development, which obviously we would take care of. We assert that those standards of review that govern you support the contemplated use and our application. The staff did a really good job in addressing those, and where they determined that the subject property really good job in addressing those. And where they determined that the subject property appears suitable for the proposed rezone and suggested only five conditions, if approval is granted, and we have no objection to any of those conditions, we feel this property would be compatible, given the R25 residential use to the south and the R2 residential use across Herman Rushing Road. Again, the city water and sewer is what would make this doable and also would reduce those impacts that we've been hearing about earlier tonight. Also, you've heard that we are outside of the future land use plan on some of these. This one is certainly inside the comprehensive plan. That's another item that supports our application. I just made a quick list of what, just pulling from the staff's review, the positives that would support your recommendation. First is that city water and sewer, that takes care of a lot of impacts right there. The standards of review, the majority of those support the rezone, according to the staff. Even in their analysis, they determined that the, there is an overall neutral impact on county services. Once again, it conforms to the comprehensive land use plan. Traffic study only required the left turn lane. We're got the residential uses on either side of us. And as stated, the staff did conclude that it appears suitable. So we would ask that you take this property and recommend approval of our application to the Board of Commissioners. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Joel Martin has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate you giving me an opportunity to speak. Yes, what he said is right, that across the road, the city annexed the acres. They're gonna be a hunt. They've already got three phases that are going in place. Burke Culture Road, it's not a big road. It's a two-lane road. You've got, you've got townhomes and homes being built, and they're right next to where the Herman Rushing Road. That's two phases. There's still a third phase. On the other side of Burke Culture Road, there's gonna be 87 cottages. Then down to Cowan Road, there's already two large townhome sites and apartment sites being built now, where the subdivision's just been completed. I don't know how much more traffic that can be. Now, you think about all those homes and all those townhomes, are they two cars? Are they three car families on Burke Culture Road? Then you don't have a left-hand turn that goes on to 67. And there's no way of putting a 60, a left-hand turn on 67. None. Zero. You're not gonna widen Herman Rushing Road. You know, it's already busy. Now, I know a traffic study today may not show everything you need to do, but when you, when you've got Sally Z School coming out and other things going on, it's a crossroad for people coming from Brooklyn and all the way down through Burke Culture to get on 67. It's busy. Now, you're not gonna be able to tell the future until the future comes. Two cars per, you've got 185 houses, but there's two cars for 185 houses. Or there's two cars for 214 townhouses. How much more traffic's gonna be there? I moved over there to Chatham Way because it was a nice subdivision. Now, you're gonna abut the subdivision with all these multi-use houses. I don't know what they are, if they're gonna be duplexes, or are they gonna be apartments or townhomes? I have no idea. Nothing's been said. So I'm saying right now, it needs to be a denial, or it needs to be tabled until we see what's gonna happen with the other already been approved. There's too many already been approved. I moved here three years ago to come to Bullock County. I worked, I worked in Bullock County for almost 30 years. I love Bullock County. But now, I'm just, I'm really making a decision with, do I want to stay in Bullock County with all the work, all the building that's been going on? So I plead to you. The thing about the people in the subdivision, think about the people all on Burke Culture Road that's already there. Come on, live with me. Now, I'll show you what the traffic's like. God bless each one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Anderson, I mean, Mr. Rushing? You are?
I think Hayden.
Hayden signed up. Okay.
Hayden Rollins, Hussey Gay Bell. Evening, everybody. I can, I can speak to the traffic. We did a traffic study that studied the whole Burke Culture corridor. It included all the current projects that the city's working on, as well as future ones in the county that are in the works right now. That study included a few intersections that we looked at. There's work in the works for Highway 67 and Burke Culture Road, as well as Kewan and Burke Culture. So those improvements are getting started. Those are things that take time to do. But you're looking at a development that, I mean, in the earliest of timeframes would be two to three years before you got people living in these homes. So there's a great deal of work that has to be done between now and then. But we feel like, from a traffic standpoint, based on the studies that have been done, that, and with our improvements, that we won't make things worse than they are. We'll actually improve them when all the work gets completed. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Mr. Rushing? Hayden really took care of the main thing that I was gonna say. That is a correct statement on the traffic study. I'll just add to that. The City of Statesboro, when they approved that annexation, they did make a commitment that they would be involved in making those improvements. I don't know if Mr. Martin knew that. But they are looking at making the improvements to the intersection of Burke Culture and 67. And they basically made that commitment when they annexed that property across the road. So we do envision that taking place, again, before this one ever comes online. And they are townhomes, by the way. Thanks again. Okay. Questions from this board? Yeah. You still got time?
I heard some of that. But I want to tell you, I don't know what they're gonna do to do, to correct that traffic. They got convenience store at 67 and Burke Culture, and you got extended hotel. So I'm interested in that, on how you're gonna fix that. On that, you know, I mean, you can tell me you're gonna fix it all you want to, but you ain't gonna tell me how you're gonna do it. And I don't believe you. So I'll just be like that right now. But I just want to let you know, traffic study today is one thing. All those cars coming online in the next two years and Burke Culture not being fixed, I know that circle they're talking about. I still think that's, we've got a problem there.
Okay, sir. Any questions from this board?
Mr. Stephen, I know this is your favorite question that I like to ask, but are these, I'm assuming these are all gonna be rentals. I know that's, there's no memoratorium on rentals, but I'd just like to know.
I don't think that's been determined yet. I think they could even be sold. In fact, this group may even consider managing it themselves, but more than likely, they would look at trying to sell it to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none, I'll call for a motion. Remind you, the staff did put some conditions forth. If you should make a motion to approve...
We have no objections to this.
And they have no objections to them. So we need a motion up or down?
I make a motion to deny.
All right, we have a motion for Ms. Reiner to deny. To have a second. Second from Mr. Lane. All those in favor of the denial of this item, please raise your hand. We have three and four. One. Mr. Bath? Okay. That will be heard by the Commissioners November the 7th at 5:30. We're gonna load their calendar up.
Thankfully, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any more. If I may, Dave keeps.
Thank you. All right. Max Landing LLC submitted an application for a sketch plan to divide 103 acres into 119 parcels. The property is located at 816 Alfred Road. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property was rezoned, I believe, earlier this year. Off of, it fronts Highway 67, but the access would be along Emmett Grove Road. I just showed the zoning map, just to, you know, again, show you that it was rezoned to the R25. That area that's shown in green throughout the parcel, that has remained commercial and, which is shown on the, on the map, or site map as proposed. And this is the proposed site plan. It does, in your staff report, we included the conditions that were put on the property at the time of rezoning. And so we also included elevations, which do appear to meet what's proposed, or what's required in the ordinance. Of course, the turn lanes as condition at the time of rezone, those aren't necessarily shown currently on the site plan, but that would be worked through in the next, you know, next phase, preliminary plat, phase. Other than that, we recommend approval of the sketch plan. And felt that it met the zoning conditions that were attached when it was rezoned.
Okay. Let's see. Who's agent on this? Hey, all right, come on.
Yes, sir. And I can thank you, James, for that summary. Again, just two accesses on Emmett Grove Road. We will install the turn lane as required by the conditions, the right turn onto Highway 67. This will be a private water system with individual septic tanks for each lot. Stormwater detention will be handed on site. There's some existing ponds on site that we will utilize for that. Any further question, I'd be glad to answer.
Okay. Any question?
Any reason there's no buffer against those other properties in that corner?
There actually is a buffer. It's just the hatch isn't shown. There will be the buffer as required by the ordinance, all the way around 25 feet.
Okay. Any other questions? Entertain a motion? Have a motion for Mr. Lane to approve. Second by Mr. Bath. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank y'all. Item number 11. Max Landing LLC has submitted an application for a sketch plan to divide 52.23 acres into 35 parcels. The property is located at 816 Alfred Road. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property is just across the road, across Alfred Road, which was a previous agenda item. We did include in your staff report the conditions that made it through when this rezoning was approved, which the roadway improvements for Alfred Road, you know, those roadway improvements would go to the, to the entrance as shown here. And as long as the applicant feels there's no problem there, everything else seems to meet the ordinance, so we recommend approval of the sketch plan.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes, sir. This will be one access, Alfred Road. We'll pave it from Emmett Grove to our entrance of our subdivision. With the current right-of-way that's in place, we'll also reserve a little extra right-of-way on either side of those projects for Alfred Road, any kind of future improvements. As with the other across the road, there will be a private water system, individual septic tanks as well. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions for this one as well.
Okay. Any questions from this board?
I'm assuming the same thing for the buffer.
Yes, sir, buffers.
Okay. No other questions? Entertain a motion? Motion by Mr. Bath to approve. Second by Ms. Trumbull. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Item number 12. Mayberry Landings Holdings LLC has submitted an application for a sketch plan to divide 25 acres into 50 units. The property is located at 5225 Harville Road. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property, again, is located on Harville Road, just south of Statesboro. The property was rezoned along with the remainder of the track, which went to an R25, as shown on the map. But they were both rezoned back November 2022. And again, at this time, they, or at that time, they reserved this field as an R3. There are conditions that we attached to the staff report. They are over 30 conditions. But at this point in the development process, what is specifically required at the sketch plan phase appears to have been met. And this is the, the site plan that's proposed for approval. So we do recommend approval with other sketch plan, which it follows the conditions.
One last time tonight. Hayden Rollins, Hussey Gay Bell. Thank you, James. This is 50 units, as James said, on about 25 acres. Will have a community sewer system with a private water system that'll actually connect to the adjacent Mayberry subdivision. We'll have two access points on Harville Road. We will have internal sidewalks throughout this development. We have plenty of room for detention and open space. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Your water system now, will this be the 500 gallons?
For the 500 gallons.
So, okay. Any questions from this board?
Yeah, we're good with all the conditions, too, that the staff has.
Motion to approve by Ms. Reiner. Second by Mr. Lane. All those in favor of approval? That's unanimous. Thank you. Item number 13. RNH Land Holdings LLC has submitted an application requesting 80-foot variance from the Appendix B Subdivision Regulation, Skid Us 7.7.2, Cultisac Street Design Standards. The street design as proposed would be 880 feet. James Anderson will be acting as agent. The property is located on Youngblood Road across from Hamilton Landings. Mr. Pope?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item was placed in front of the item 14 because item 14 relies on a variance for sketch plan approval. So I guess we'll unpack this as best we can here. So the property's currently is on R25, again, is on Youngblood Road, which is to the east of Statesboro. And as shown on the zoning map, the conditions that were placed on the property at the time of rezoning... of rezoning, I believe, back in 2014 for the R-25, it went from R-40 to R-25, included those conditions in the staff report. One thing, if you read through those conditions, well, let me, so one thing, it, the conditions called for is two entrances on the Youngblood Road. So we looked at, I guess, you know, in the design, how overall the road network was gonna, you know, function internally and then out to Youngblood Road. But, as you can see in the site plan, basically, the way the land lays out with wetlands around the majority of the property line, there's two fingers that you could develop. And so, there's a wetland, I guess, headwater of maybe a stream, or I think there's maybe a pond in there, but there are wetlands that go between those two development fingers. And so, what that, I guess, essentially created was an island that you would see up at the top portion, and to maximize what's already been zoned and to, to really bring this property up to an equal footing with surrounding properties for development, you know, they needed 80-foot variance, in which we felt like is 10%, I guess, 10% of the, what's allowed, so 800 feet is the maximum. Felt like that was a fairly insignificant amount, and also in consideration of if you were, you know, to lessen or try and create some connectivity there across that wetland, then you're disturbing the wetlands and, you know, in the, in totality, it's probably better to leave the wetlands alone than to, you know, try and get it strict adherence to the ordinance. So, with all that said, staff recommends approval of the variance, again, based on property-specific features, which we don't oftentimes see, but, you know, we feel like to maximize what that property is capable of, the variance is appropriate. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Anderson.
We're gonna address the variance first.
Right, correct.
Thank you, James. So this one, we're gonna talk about the sketch plan next, so we'll be looking at the same picture. So what we're asking for here is a variance to have a road that's, on that finger that goes to the left, there's a little spur that goes out, and from that spur to the end of that cul-de-sac is 880 feet. And the ordinance says 800 feet, so we're just asking for that length of that spur to be 80 feet longer than the ordinance calls for, and that's what the variance is about. We'd ask you to give, grant that variance.
Okay. Questions from this board? Would this be considered a new subdivision, or, since it hasn't been built out, or is it?
Correct.
So they're gonna have to put sidewalks in and?
Oh, for sure. They'll follow the new ordinance.
They have, follow the new ordinance.
Right.
Okay.
And in that, the portion where Mr. Anderson was talking about, if you can see on your monitor, I believe, Brad, correct me if I'm wrong, there would be a three-way stop there, so that's what, you know, calms the traffic. So you're not, our primary concern is, you know, public safety and being able to turn around, and then traffic calming, so, again, that would be there from that portion.
Well, with sidewalks, it might be to keep them out of the road.
Exactly, yeah.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Lane, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Reiner, all in favor? That's unanimous, so we can move on to the next one. Item number 14. RNH Land Holdings LLC has submitted an application for a sketch plan to divide 72 acres into 58 units. The property is located north of Hamilton Landing subdivision. Mr. Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will go back to the site plan. Briefly mentioned about the conditions that were placed on the property and access to Youngblood Road. We did include a condition, one condition, that would address what we feel like would meet the intent of the condition originally placed on the property in 2014, which, by increasing the road width at that entrance point, because they did originally have a design that showed two entrances, but having that, that, I don't know if that's 100, 100 feet, or about 200 feet long entrance road, there's enough connectivity there that with a wider entrance, you know, I think it meets the intent of the ordinance or those, that condition. And so, we recommend approval of this sketch plan, again, with that condition that the entrance roadway essentially would have a divided median to make it wide enough for a fire truck and, or any other emergency personnel.
So this, this was, this property's already zoned R-25. We're proposing 58 lots on the 72 acres, there would be approximately 1.29 acres per lot. We've got a good many wetlands in the rear, so the density's spread out. We'd have paved streets, steel-built homes, you have some pictures, I think, in your packets of the tight homes we would be proposing to build. None of our roads would impact across the wetlands, as James pointed out a little earlier. We moved, we had two entrances to begin with, but we moved that entrance to align with the subdivision across the street, so there would only be one intersection when you come down Youngblood Road, you only have one point of intersection. So we're, we're in agreement to widen out that entrance, so we got room for emergency vehicles and fire trucks.
Is that shown on the sketch plan?
That isn't, that is not, that is not. We would widen, where it's wide there, we would take that on back to that first intersection and widen it all the way through there. We met with staff a good bit back in time and worked, worked through these issues, and staff has recommended approval of the sketch with this one condition, and we're in agreement to do that, and we'll ask that you approve the sketch plan.
Okay, question from this board?
Do we not have to have a variance even, even though it's a wider entrance? Because it's still one entrance, and there's over 50 lots, will we still not need a variance for the one entrance? And it's still one way in and one way out, just because it's wider? Before we vote yes or no on this, I feel like it's probably necessary.
I don't, Jeff, I don't, I don't know if you want to answer that, but what our recommendation was in, was rooted in is, there's about six or seven exceptions in fire code, and so the state code would, it just mirrors what state fire code says, but I, I don't, I'm not sure as far as technically, or if this board has the ability to?
I'm okay with the proposal, but it seems like, and Jeff, you can answer this, but if we're gonna have one entrance, we probably should have some type of variance unless you see some way around it.
Well, yeah, I mean, the condition was to require two var, two entrances? That was the?
Well, yes.
Is that exactly the way it was worded, or?
Tonight's condition, the intent was to address the number six condition from 2020, or 2014. Because my, and again, I may be wrong in this, but the planning and zoning board, I think, has some ability to interpret the conditions and intent, but?
Even under the new subdivision's ordinance, it would require two entrances, right?
Yeah, because it's over 50 lots.
Correct, so.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Bath may have a good point there, that, I mean, if you, if it required two entrances, that's not what we have here, right? Or is there only this one entrance now?
Yeah, the, the longer entrance he's proposing, it'd just be wider, it's still one way in and one way out.
Yeah.
But we plan to make both one way in and one way out wide enough to accommodate?
I agree with you, I'm, I'm looking at the legal side more, more than?
Normally, I, I think the board of commissioners would have to ultimately approve that.
Okay.
As a condition modification, I, I mean, if they impose the condition?
He went to the school, I didn't, so.
Yeah, I'm asking y'all, I mean, I'm willing to vote on it, but if the ordinance requires two entrances.
It doesn't come up very often, so I mean, it's, it's like, because what, the way, my understanding of the law, when they approve something with conditions, then the conditions become a part of the ordinance.
Well, the ordinance is already two entrances.
With regard to that property, that particular property.
He says that in the conditions here, number six also.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess you could do it with a variance, because if it's part of the ordinance, and it?
I mean?
You know, you could grant, typically, you can grant a variance from the requirements of the ordinance, so I guess you could do it with a variance.
I mean, again, well, sketch plan, if you wanted to defer it, and then?
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with deferring it and then bringing back that variance, and then we vote on the sketch plan after the variance.
I mean, if you wanted to go to two entrances, I don't, I don't, from staff, I don't think staff has a problem with having two entrances, it was just?
I don't think that's the problem, I think just the legality of, it says two entrances.
When, when we met with staff and we had two entrances, they didn't like that. They would prefer that we line up the entrance across the street with the subdivision to create one point of conflict.
I think, I think that's fine, we're just trying to figure out whether we need to vote on the variance.
We kinda got boxed in with one, one driveway, and Brad, you've kinda felt like if we widened this thing out, we would accommodate emergency vehicles, which is why you have the two driveways to start with.
I think that's why, what you've done is fine, but I do think this board needs to have a variance to change that and then vote on this.
I, I agree with that.
Okay.
So, so we couldn't vote on sketch plan approval and vote on the variance later? Is that possible?
I don't think so.
Well, I guess.
No.
I mean, if you approved it, you have to prove it's subject to a later approval of the variance.
Yeah, I would say we vote to defer this, and then come back with a variance next month, and then we can vote on both at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, that might be better, Jim, because?
I met y'all's mercy.
I'm making a motion to defer to next month with the variance.
A motion by Mr. Bath, second by Mr. Lane, all those in favor? It's unanimous, so we'll see that next month.
James, will the variance be able to be heard next month with the advertising requirements now?
I don't think it will, but I didn't wanna, I don't know for sure, so it may be two months from now.
Yeah. They amended the Zoning Procedures Act to try to make it, I guess they were trying to make sure people received a fair hearing and got adequate notice and adequate time, but basically what it did is, on variance, is it extended out the time, which makes it, really, I don't think anybody around here likes that, any of the applicants, because it just, like, requires more time, but that's just the way it is, we have to, we have to do it, so.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to item number 15. RNH Land Holdings LLC has submitted an application requesting a variance of 250 gallons per minute from the 500 gallons per minute as required by Appendix B subdivision regulation, schedule Property is located on Youngblood Road across from Hamilton Landing subdivision. James Anderson will be acting as agent. Mr. Pope.
All right, this variance is, involves the property from the previous agenda item. And, well, as, as read, the request is to vary the, the fire flow from 500 gallons per minute to 250 gallons per minute. For various reasons, including the staff report, staff recommends denial of the variance request.
So what we had hoped to do is tie this subdivision into some existing water systems that are across the street, and probably put in a well on our side that would be a backup well, but, so we're asking for the variance.
Any questions from this board? Okay, entertain a motion?
Motion to deny.
Have a motion to deny, they'll have a second, second from Mr. Bath, motion by Mr. Lane, all those in favor of denial, that's unanimous. Okay. Go to item number 16. RNH Land Holdings LLC has submitted an application requesting a variance from Appendix B subdivision regulation, schedule 6.7.1, improvement standards by development scale, major subdivision, 50 lots or more, curb and gutter requirement. The property is located at Youngblood Road, James Anderson will be acting as agent. Mr. Pope?
All right, this, this request also involves the property from previous agenda items. I guess in summary, our ordinance does require for curb and gutter drainage systems over 50 lot, or subdivisions over 50 lots. This variance would then allow the developer to use open, open ditches or open swales rather than, rather than the curb and gutter. But staff recommends a denial of the variance.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
Really not much to add, we're asking for a variance not to have to do curb and gutter, we're exceeding the threshold of 50 by eight, so we want, we like the option to explore doing crowned streets and ditches versus curb and gutter.
Okay, questions from the board?
James, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but when we listened to the rezone of this, I remember there being a bunch of people in here complaining about drainage.
Well, for the neighboring property, the rezone for neighboring property, but?
And taking away curb and gutter takes away a lot of the drainage availability, correct?
I mean, yeah, I would agree with you, but?
Okay, that's all that's?
But the, the neighboring property does have curb and gutter installed.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions? Entertain a motion?
Motion to deny.
Have a motion to deny by Mr. Lane, second by Mr. Bath, all those in favor of the motion to deny. That's unanimous, thank you. And finally, the last one. RNH Land Holdings has submitted an application for a variance from Appendix B subdivision regulations, 6.7.1, improvement standard by development scale, major subdivision, 50 lots or more, curb and gutter requirement. The property is located on Old River Road, north at the near Macedonian Road, James Anderson will be acting as agent.
All right, Mr. Chairman. All right, Mr. Chairman, this is the property that is seeking a rezoning, which we heard earlier tonight. The applicant hadn't filed for a variance in the event that it was approved, of which, I guess technically, in an Ag 5 subdivision, if you had over 50 lots, the way our ordinance reads currently, you would have to do curb and gutter in an Ag 5 subdivision, so, I mean, it is, it is an applicable variance, no matter what the zoning is. But again, this is the property, this is the proposed site plan, again, with that being subject to change, but with that, staff recommends a denial of the variance.
Okay, Ms. Anderson? Well, I'm batting zero, I don't think y'all may be spoiling. Again, we're asking for a variance to require curb and gutter. Okay. Any questions? All right, entertain a motion?
Motion to deny.
Have a motion, motion for Ms. Reiner to deny, have a second from Mr. Lane, all those in favor of denial, that's unanimous. All right, any other items need to be discussed tonight? I'd like, I'd like to thank y'all for y'all's patience and indulgence, and feel free to come back any second Thursday and, and enjoy our meetings. I entertain a motion to dismiss.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay.